Good evening. Time to call this regular meeting of the Andover Inland and Watercourses and Budlands Commission to Order, seven o'clock on Monday, November the first, two thousand twenty-one. First order of business, roll call and seating of alternates. I see that members, commissioners, Judd Larson and William Monroe are present for the meeting, so we have a quorum. The next item of business, changes and additions, in this case, to the agenda. We have two additions to consider, and I will move that we add to the agenda. Inland I W W C twenty-one, twenty-three, which is the town of Andover, Lake Road Parking Project, and I W W C twenty-one, twenty-four, from Garrett Holmes for subdivision and development on five-eighty Lake Road. These, I think, were distributed to the commission by Agent Wagner. One of them came in, both of them came in too late to be added to the agenda, but we should, I think, consider them at this meeting, since it's a matter of simply receiving the applications. And Agent Wagner noted that the agent for the engineer for the five-eighty Lake Road project would be in attendance at the meeting. So having moved, I would ask for a second to make those additions to the agenda.
Second the motion?
Commissioner Larson seconds, so I'll ask for a vote. Those in favor can signify by simply raising their hand, visible to the camera. Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes. We have the October fourth, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting minutes. We're distributed by email and, of course, are available on the website. Again, I will move to approve those minutes. And ask for a second.
No second?
Okay, second from Commissioner Larson. Any discussion, any corrections or suggested revisions? Okay, I have none and see no others. I'll go ahead and call for vote on the motion to approve the minutes. Again, those in favor can signify by simply raising your hand. So the minutes are approved unanimously. Okay, next item on the agenda, opportunity for public comment. I don't see any members of the public other than applicants or concerned parties. So we will take it that there are no public comment. Okay, moving on to item number six, new business. Now here's where we get down to business. The first item, six A, an application from James and Abby Cole at eighty-three School Road to repair and rebuild an existing stone stairway that extends into Andover Lake. We have, of course, the application as well as a site plan and a number of photographs that were submitted. As part of the record, I trust that commissioners have access to those from the web. I'm just pulling those up now, so my screen isn't too cluttered. And I see that applicant James Cole is on the call, and I'll ask if he has would like to walk us through what they intend to do. Abby, could you unmute? Mr. Cole?
Yeah, got me. Good, so there, as you saw from the photographs, there are some steps that are leading into the lake that we want to rebuild, make them more regular. As I said in the application, it is merely using stone replacement from the property. And they'll be about four feet wide and will be done without any heavy equipment involved.
Do you have a contractor for this project?
Yeah, I do. Is it Jeff Dondaro from Blastonbury?
Okay, yeah, yeah, I know his work. Got quite a few Jeff Dondaro projects on our property. So, okay, we'll assume that typical protections. Do you have or have in progress approval from the Andor Lake Management Association?
We've submitted.
Okay. Well, hopefully that will be received in time for us to act when we actually consider the application. As you're probably aware, at this point, we are receiving the application that our next area, I mean, we can actually consider and vote on the application. Under state statutes, we are prohibited from approving or, for that matter, disapproving an application until a period of time of at least two weeks has elapsed. So that means essentially we would have to wait till a subsequent meeting to actually vote on your application.
Okay.
Any, okay, I commend the submission of the extensive photographs, which I think will probably obviate the need for a site visit, unless I hear from one of the commissioners that it would be desirable. Again, you could just kayak in or walk in and take a look from the dam, which is right downstream. And again, that very helpful and again, knowing that it's you know, no equipment involved and basically simply relaying the existing steps, which we can see are somewhat uneven and not appropriate for aging in place.
That's exactly right.
Okay, so any questions from the commissioners?
All set.
Okay, Judd?
I'm all set.
Okay, well, then, thanks for informing us, and we will look forward to, again, considering the and actually acting on the application at our next meeting. You may feel free to check out of the meeting at this point, if you wish.
Great, thank you. And, yep, thanks.
Okay, very good. So then, moving on, our next application for, again, twenty-one, twenty-two, this is again work that involves intrusion onto the lake floor. Basically, repair of a oops, hold on a second, I'm trying to open the application materials. So again, application number twenty-one, twenty-two, we're receiving. It's from Jeff Minor and for a lake repair on the property of Gallinets, three-twenty-six Lake Road. I don't see the applicant or agent on the call. Maybe Agent Wagner, I guess you're probably as familiar as anyone with this.
Yeah, I just I sent the applicant a text message to see if he would attend, but I haven't heard back, so, um, yeah, basically, there should be some pictures on the website. I visited the site on, it was last week, on twenty-six, during the rainstorm. So basically, this, this involves rebuilding. There's a seventy-five-foot section of wall that goes, it's kind of in the middle of the property. That's crumbling down. It's kind of just needs, since disrepair, so they're basically going to rebuild that section of wall, and then you can see in the pictures, I took pictures of each end of it. So you can see like to the left of the picnic table where the, where the wall kind of curves in, that's, that's going to be kind of the end of the wall, and then it'll go over to the right of the picture. There's a like if you scroll down a little bit, there's more pictures. Yeah, you can see the, the both ends, see the end of the wall here. So that's the section of wall that will be rebuilt. It'll just basically be restacked with mostly the existing stone that's already there. Jeff told me, he said that's pretty good stone, so they shouldn't need to bring much at all in. If they do, it's going to be the same height. He's going to put a soap fence between that and the water, once the water's let up, let down. And then there's going to be straw and hay bale as needed for erosion control. And then any equipment will, if you scroll back to the pictures, on the, I think it's the last picture. Right there, that's the end of the driveway. You can see in the, in the foreground of the picture, that's where they're going to enter with any equipment, excavator that they're going to use to get down there. So it's pretty easy access to the area.
Okay, and they intend to follow the existing contours. I notice since there's a bit of a cove there.
Yeah, yeah, they're not planning on changing anything. I guess the applicant's only, only reason she wants to redo the wall is because her grandkids play over there, and she wants it, wants it to be safe, so they're going to keep everything basically the same. They're just going to restack it and, and make it solid.
Okay. And again, of course, ALMA approval will be required. I'm sure you conveyed that to the applicants.
Yeah. It's in progress. Working on that now.
Okay. Our commissioners, any questions?
I did have one question, George.
Go ahead.
And Agent Wagner, do you know, I, I read in the application where they were putting you know, the typical crushed stone before the wall. And I didn't know if they were removing dirt to put in the crushed stone, or if they were planning to extend. You just put the crushed stone after they get to the edge of you know, where the existing wall is, and then move the wall out, the, the foot and a half or whatever it was going to be there.
It looks like they're going to do.
Yeah, actually, I can address that. It says in eight B of the application that they will be removing approximately eight yards of material from behind the existing wall.
Do we know what they plan to do with that?
I'm not sure.
Sounds like clean fill to me, but that's a good question. We might ask Mr. Minor to address whether it's going to be relocated on the property or removed.
If that was my only question.
I can I can send him a message and ask him that. I'll make a note of it.
Okay, I didn't have any other questions, so I guess we can then move on to the next item. And again, bear with me for a moment while I open the materials. Now, next is an application by the town of Andover for essentially creating parking area on Lake Road between Merritt Valley Road and the Jonathan Trumbull Highway, as we know it from Google Maps, to improve access to the rail trail and town-owned property between Lake Road and Cheney Brook. So I see that Eric Anderson is on the call, and I'll ask him to walk us through the project.
George, can you bring up the, the site plan from Yantik River Consultants? George, and then I'll talk you through it.
Abby can do that.
Okay, so as most of you know, the town acquired this property about three years ago from one of the Merritt family members with the intention of kind of doing three things. The first was preserving much of the land around Cheney Brook. The second was to address a parking issue that the town has with access to the rail trail and the fact that we have inadequate parking town-wide for the rail trail. And the third thing was to put in a small, low-impact, just picnic table area near the rail trail, near the, the old historic stone bridge on Merritt Valley Road. So as most of you know from driving by, cars park there regularly. And from time to time, Public Works has gone in and just flattened out the area again after there's been erosion. And what we're, what we're planning on doing is just taking the existing situation and making it better. Because right now, you know, we're definitely getting gravel movement and erosion, and the goal is to regrade and then improve the, the gravel parking area to increase its capacity a little bit. And then also create a silt sedimentation basin that will be cleanable in the future. So any sediment that does come down, you know, will collect in one spot, and the town can remove it from time to time prior to it getting into Cheney Brook and getting into the overflow area, which it's doing now. We would also envision doing, if you look at the, the parking area closest to Route Six, there is a lot of trash in that area. There, you know, at some point in the past, an electrical contractor used that as his dumping ground. We've already taken out a pretty enormous amount of electrical wire waste. You know, we proposed to do some more cleanup at that location also. You know, at the same time, we do the improvements. The second part of it is, if you look, that little green pathway leading off the rail trail, that's an existing former gravel road that dates back to probably the colonial times. And what we're doing there is we're just clearing it, so it's accessible again, because it's gotten a little bit overgrown. And there's a couple of pine trees in there that are really pretty, and we're not planning on taking down anything large at all. We're just doing selective clearing of the underbrush, big enough to make a picnic spot for one picnic table, you know, and leveling that area a little bit. You know, so that's basically what the town intends to do. We had the town engineer put a plan together to mitigate any damage while we were actually working on it during construction. And then also with the intention of taking the, what's happening now with it in mitigating that going forward by dealing with any silt that does come out of the gravel area, so it doesn't end up in Cheney Brook. So that's basically what the town is proposing to do here.
Okay, you know, Agent Wagner, I think you know that this is all basically activity that will be within the one-hundred-foot upland review area. And potentially, this is something that you could approve on your own recognizance here. And I'm glad we, you know, the commission has a chance to, to view this, and I think it's a definitely worthwhile activity. Any questions from the commission about the plan that Eric just walked us through?
Am I a mystic, Eric? But what are the purple lines on that drawing? Uh, as far as I know, hmm, that's a really good question. I was trying to determine if the activity is in wetlands or in the upland review area of wetlands. So that's going to be one of my questions for the commission, Jed, is that we couldn't get this wetland flagged already, but we have somebody available to do it if we, if we need to. So if you want to see this, you know, wetlands flagged and you want to do a site walk in the area, we certainly can do that. That's, that's you know, it's not inexpensive. If you aren't going to do a site walk, we probably wouldn't wetlands flag it, but if you want to do a site walk, we certainly can.
Judd, if I could comment on that, I was one of the party of volunteers that spent a bit of time clearing nasties like, well, particularly barberry from that area several years ago. The town acquired it, and I can, again, speaking as a person with an actual PhD in soil science, I can say that this is probably not wetlands. It is upland, it is upslope, there are welding soils, there's no, no sign of you know, until you get down right close to Cheney Brook, there's, there's no sign of typical wetland vegetation. And I personally would not expect a need for formal wetlands flagging by a certified soil scientist. I'm not a certified soil scientist. I just have some expertise in the area. So, long story short, I don't think we need wetlands flagging. I, the, the purple lines dotting around the area are kind of enigmatic. We might look for a little clarification some point from the town engineer, just to satisfy our curiosity. But they don't seem to correspond to any boundaries of either distance from Cheney Brook, distance from Hop River, or wetland delineation.
I think I saw a chat comment, probably from the person representing the application across the street. I do think it would be, it might be worth knowing whether the place we were putting the picnic area, it would be nice if it was not in a wetlands area. I, I think that would make that easier and more straightforward. I don't know that we need to have the whole thing flagged, but it would certainly if there's a better place to put the picnic table, we ought to consider it before rather than after we approve the plan. Well, what I would say, Jed, is that in elevation, that's actually higher than the rail trail there, because it slopes up quite a bit towards Merritt Valley. Okay. So I don't think, I think if there was any area, I'd question whether we were in either the floodplain or the, an actual wetlands area, it would be the lower parking area, the parking area closest to Route Six, because the reality is that section of Route Six is in the hundred-year floodplain or parts of it are. So I would not be surprised if that area, that parking area, is in or very close to the five-hundred-year floodplain. But I don't, it does not have the characteristics of being a wetlands area, certainly from, you know, a soils overview. And I'm not a soil scientist either.
I'm noting that the upper elevation of, I'm sorry, the lower elevation of the lower parking lot appears to be about two-hundred-and-ninety-five according to the, the denoted contours on, on the site plan. I don't recall from our discussion of the gravel pit project on the other side of Route Six, but it seems to me that that elevation would be out of the floodplain. You know, it's high enough to, to qualify as being out of the floodplain. That, that's a good point, Judd, and will I, I think it would be good to have at least direct Agent Wagner to make sure that those conditions, that is to say, the site for the clearing for the picnic area and the lower parking lot don't run into any problems with either wetland impact or floodplain potential.
I agree, and you know, it'd be nice for Agent Wagner to, you know, describe what is on, I did not look at the GIS map online for wetlands to see what it shows there. I do have a little bit of a concern, though, that we maintain a similar standard between what we expect the town to do and what we expect every other applicant to do with respect to, you know, marking, flagging the wetlands. I, I'm just I don't think it would be right for us to have a big discontinuity in those expectations. And, and one of the things that, you know, and again, I'm not interested in frivolously spending money, but I would think that the town, we should expect to live to a higher standard, at least as high a standard as we would expect anybody else coming in with an application on that respect. So whatever, whatever our standard is, it ought to be the same.
This is true, but again, as I said, I think this is a, a project that would be an upland review area project and not a wetlands impact project. And
We don't know that, George.
I, okay, I don't know that in the sense that, no, we haven't have wetlands delineated. But again, as Eric pointed out, given the elevations and the soil and vegetation characteristics of the site, it seems highly unlikely that any of the proposed impact would be in wetlands per se. Nevertheless, I think that, you know, again, either, either a site walk or a further inspection of the site by our agent could clarify that without having to necessarily involve a certified soil scientist.
That's up to the commission. I mean, if you request it, the town will, will have a soil scientist wetland flag it. That's up to the commission. I mean, if you request it, the town will, will have a soil scientist wetland flag it.
Okay, Jed, do you want that level of scrutiny or uh would you be satisfied with less?
I, I, I just want, I just want the level of scrutiny for this application to be the same as what we expect from anybody else in.
Hmm, right.
And I know, yeah, I know we've gone through uh, some discussions about uh, when, when a logger wants to cross a dry wetland crossing and put some corduroy in there. You know, we, we have gone through the uh we have, we have expected and had the wetlands flagged, the, the, the map the whole bit.
Right, the wetland crossing. And in other words, that was, those, those projects that involve direct impact on on wetlands, uh, not on the upland review area. So I would, I would say that uh the uh, that closer level of scrutiny would not be required of any other applicant in this kind of situation. I mean, for private landlord or wanting to put in uh roadside parking, if that were even possible, I don't know. Uh, but, you know, I, I don't, I don't think that uh, that level of scrutiny would require for any project uh, with these characteristics, namely activities in the upland review area. Of Cheney Brook.
Okay, so the next time an application comes in and the applicant says, well, it doesn't look to me like there's any you know, uh, wetland soils there, but I'm not a soil scientist. I guess we'll accept that is okay.
If it appears to be in an upland review area. We can, you know, I think ask our agent to
Well, let's ask our agent. What's, what's the agent have to say about the wetlands? On this.
Just to uh, to review that, yeah, but okay.
Jed, I, I have myself, you know, have walked this with the wetlands agent, so you know, he should be able to be able to give you a verbal description of the area in question.
Yeah, and I, I agree with George's assessment that it's um, it's steep there and uh the proposed picnic area, trail and the parking area are all well well above um the brook and then looks to me like there's a there's no wetlands in the area, but either way, it would be, um, I mean, everything's case by case. You have to look at all aspects of the application to determine what, you know, what level of scrutiny is required for each one. So applying like a blanket standard to uh every application, I mean, you'd, you'd probably under undervalue certain things on certain applications and you'd overvalue certain things on other applications. So you gotta just kind of take it as a whole. Um, when you decide how much scrutiny, how much uh, research is gonna need to uh go into each project, and this one's pretty um I mean, most of the work is already done and, and existing parking areas, there's no, no real major clearing or anything other than for the picnic area and some trails um. So yeah, I don't, I don't see, you know, if they're constructing a bigger, you know, like a bigger pavilion or something like that there, then uh, you know, that, that would be a different story.
I, I agree with you, Joe. I agree with George and I agree with Eric. What I don't agree with is we are the inland wetlands commission. We've got a site plan here and we don't have any wetlands delineated on it, unless it's that purple line it's on. And I think that is the wrong standard to set.
Well, you can ask, then ask for delineation on this. That's easy. I mean, you can do that.
Okay.
Right.
I'd like to see delineation on the map.
If the commission wants this wetland flagged, what I would suggest is that you schedule a sidewalk and we'll get it wetlands flagged and you can verify the, the onsite conditions prior to making a decision. The town has no issues with that. If that's what you want.
Good. Commissioner Larson, you want to propose a sidewalk? For this uh, application?
I guess I, yeah, well. No, I guess I'd like to go, you know, review, I I'd like to go back and review our instructions, you know, and, and we're not gonna act on the thing tonight. I don't know how much time is of the essence. But I wanna go revisit myself. I, my expectation was, when a site plan comes into the wetlands commission, it has the wetlands delineated on it. So we can say, is the activity taking place in the wetlands? Or is it taking place in the upland review area? And, and I think that is a standard that I certainly need to have for myself. I would think that everybody on the commission would, would expect the same thing. So we can either wait and, and I'll conclude that uh, at the next meeting, or we can recognize uh what, what kind of standard we want to come before the wetlands commission and, and uh, and make that motion tonight, but I guess that's uh, that's where I come down. So I guess with all that said, I do recommend we, uh, we schedule a sidewalk and have the wetlands delineated so that we can properly do our job.
Is that in form of a motion?
Yep.
Okay, uh, second up for the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, and then uh you know, the further discussion, last for vote on the motion to uh, schedule a sidewalk, does in favor I? It's okay, motion carries unanimously. We have to schedule a date. Um, typically, we do these on Saturday mornings if uh, that's uh, agreeable. Uh, what would be a reasonable um time, Eric, in terms of getting that done, at least um I, you know, obviously the, the I don't think it's required to have entire delineation of the entire wetlands in that area, but certainly the ones that are relevant to the application, you know, proximity to the uh parking and picnic areas.
Sure.
The lead time is like that, uh, gonna be.
Um, last time I checked, you know, with the town engineer, his standard wetlands guy was backed up four to six weeks. But we did give him a heads up that it might be coming down the pike. So if you scheduled it for the twenty, oh, that's Thanksgiving, um.
Oops, no.
Probably don't wanna do it over Thanksgiving on the twenty-seventh. Um, it's possible you could set it up for the fourth of December prior to the meeting. Um, I will not be there. I will be in Minnesota, but I can certainly probably have the town's engineer be at that also. Um, so if, if that worked for the commission, which is December fourth. I'm not positive. I haven't cleared it with the town engineer or the wetlands guy to ensure we can flag it before then, but that would be my objective.
Well, we can certainly pencil it in for the fourth and then, well, if it isn't possible, well, we can delay it or defer it.
Right, and, and let's be honest, this has been on my wish list for the last three years. So if it slips a couple of months and it takes me three months to get through wetlands, that's fine. Um, cause it will be the holiday season. So, um, let me see whether I can accomplish it by the twenty-seventh. And uh, Joe, I'll try to get back to you in the next week, if that's acceptable to the commission on when we can uh, set up the sidewalk.
So let's tentatively schedule it then for Saturday, December fourth, nine AM. And uh, again, with the understanding that uh, there may be variables that we can't control. So if the area isn't flagged, we will postpone it. Uh, seen A D. Okay, so any other questions or comments regarding the uh, application? If not, we can uh, proceed uh, across the street to the application uh, for uh, subdivision and development on uh, five twenty uh, Lake Road.
And thank you all for your indulgence, by the way. Much obliged.
My word, and I hope we can get moving on it. Uh, I see that uh, Matthew Brunnen, the engineer for the project is on the call. Uh, would you like to, uh, again, this is a, a project that is in the uh, upland review area. Distinctly in the upland review area for uh, I guess, barely for the Hawk River and well, for uh, Cheney Brook. But uh, uh Agent Wagner uh, wanted to bring this to the attention of the commission. Uh, it is a fairly extensive project. So, um, project engineer wants to begin walking us through it. I'll take a moment to pull up the plans and so forth on my screen.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is, this is Matthew Brunnen. I, I'm happy to share my screen if I, if you want, so I can point with my mouse.
Yeah, I'm talking about the screen. I'm, I'm, I have a separate screen where I keep track of these things, okay?
Sure, sure. Okay, well, I'll get, I'll get started and if you guys um, have any questions while I'm talking, feel free to interrupt. I'm happy to stop and answer as I go. Uh, for the record, my name is Matthew Bruton. I'm an engineer from B O Companies uh, here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, I'm just gonna share my screen, so I think it'll be easier for you guys to follow along. Um, but again, um, feel free to stop me at any point. Um, so the parcel in question here, uh, well, let me, let me step, step, step back first. Uh, the applicant here um, is looking to divide a, a parcel into two. Um, so he can create a pad lot for a future, for a future development. Um, so we have a subdivision application in front of the planning and zoning board. Um, as part of their, of their uh, review and approval of this, it needs to come to inland wetlands uh, for your review and approval. Um, I know it's a little bit strange because there, we're not proposing anything at this time, other than splitting the lots in two. Uh, but that is the process. So uh, I'll, I'll start off with, with that base. So um, what I'm showing you here is a, a, a map of the uh, the current um, sites. For orientation, Route Six is across the bottom of the page. And Lake Road is on the left-hand side. I'm tracing it with my mouth, my mouse right now. The, the prior application you were talking about was across the street where my, my hand is circling right now. So it's currently a, a two-point sake, a six-acre lot that includes the red and the blue. On the corner of Lake and Route Six, it's currently occupied um on this southern end by a commercial plumbing business with associated parking utilities, um landscaping, things of that nature. Uh, what uh, the applicant is proposing to do is to split this lot into two. So the red area that I've traced here will be the plumbing business that would stay as is. Uh, and then the blue area would be a new parcel that's created uh, with frontage again on Route Six and Lake Road. I'm just gonna bring up um, Google Street View, so you can see what I'm talking about. So, um I'm on Route Six right now, looking at the parcel. Uh, the commercial plumbing business is in the background where my mouse is hanging out now. And uh, the majority of the lot that we are proposing to subdivide for future development is this grassed field that I'm kind of tracing with my hand. I'm gonna jump over to Lake Road. I believe this is the area you are looking to improve as part of that trail area. Uh, so we are across the street. So this is this is the parcel that we're looking to subdivide. Uh, as mentioned by the chairman, uh we don't have any wetlands on this site per se. There's nothing that has been found. It's obviously a grassed field. But given the Cheney Brook location, the upland review area definitely clips this parcel. To um, to include the upland review area in this. So, again, not looking to propose anything at this time. We're just look, looking to subdivide the parcel from one lot into two. Um, if that is successful here and at planning and zoning next month, uh, we would come back with full detailed plans. Um, that would include site plans, grading and drainage, stormwater management, erosion control, landscaping, lighting. Um, basically everything that you would normally see, um, but we're splitting this into two subdivisions first. And then we'd come back for a site plan approval and we would have to visit you guys because we do fall from the upland review area. So that's kind of a, a, you know, a quick thirty-second high-level um recap of kind of why we're here and, you know, what we'll be looking to do. Um, but I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Any questions from the commissioners? Jed, I'm sure you'll be seeing plenty of this from planning and zoning perspective. And again, I think this is fa- fairly straightforward and, and as we noted previously, uh, since it's distinctly in the upland review area. It would be um, something that the uh, agent could approve. And again, since this is really a matter of uh making sure that we get uh, wetlands uh, permit approval before um, planning and zoning, uh, can uh, look at the subdivision request. Uh, I, I think it would be uh, highly appropriate uh, for the agent to uh, do that on his own recognizance. Uh, rather than having to wait a, a month until our next regular meeting. Uh, any, uh, again, any questions or comments from commissioners regarding this application? Okay, well. Seeing none. Uh, again, I think we can uh I thank uh, Mr. Bruton for his presentation and um, we'll uh look forward to hearing uh, about the uh, next steps uh, in this, uh, in this project.
Absolutely. I'd be, I'd be happy to come back uh, when we have two lots.
Right, when, when, when there was potential for real impact.
That's right, yeah. I, I know that's what you guys care about.
Okay. Okay, then um there's no further discussion on this one. Uh, we can uh, certainly let you go, Mr. Bruton, and uh, move on to our uh, next item on the agenda.
So, Mr. Chairman, just so I'm clear, are you, are you recommending this go to Mr. Wagner for agent approval or would you like me to come back again?
Well, for this step, uh, since it's, it's just, uh, again, a it's in the upland review area, all we're talking, we're not approving an actual project, just uh, kind of getting ahead of the subdivision request.
Uh, yeah.
My opinion is that uh, Agent Wagner uh, can take it from here. And the, we won't need to hear from you unless and until uh, there's an actual uh, proposal uh, to do something on that lot. And uh, which currently appears to be used only for the occasional display of used vehicles for sale.
Yep, fine by me. Just wanted to make sure I understood, uh, you were pushing it to Joe. Uh, that, that works for me and I'm, and I'm, again, I'll come back when we have a an application with proposed, proposed development. an application with proposed, proposed development for you guys to um, review and, and, and judge.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so item seven on the agenda, enforcement actions. Uh, we don't, I don't see anything uh, specified. Uh, Agent Wagner, did you have any, anything new or any comments? I noticed that the um, previous meetings, enforcement action uh, still seems to be uh, how shall I say uh, in abeyance. Uh, the last time I drove on Townsend Road, which I do, you know, frequently. Uh, I noticed that the shipping containers were still at uh, uh, on uh, onsite at, at ninety-three Townsend Road.
Yeah, that's the only um, the only thing is no uh, nothing new. I, I spoke with him um, on October fifth, so that was probably right after our meeting. Um, and he plans to move them. He agrees. He thinks they're an eyesore. So he told me um, especially with a new house. So he wants to get them out of there. I guess he had some, I think he had back surgery. But anyway, he was recovering and couldn't empty the containers out. So he needs to empty them, get his belongings out, and then they can move them, because I guess it probably would damage whatever was inside of it. Um, if you tried to move it with, with it half-full or quarter-full or however full they are now. Um, he was planning to move them and if he could get clearance from the doctor, he was planning to do it in late October or sometime in November, hopefully. Um, now, like you said, they're still there. I drove by there last week. I think they're still there. So um, yeah, I'll keep uh, keep tabs on him. I sent him a letter, so he knows we're uh, we're paying attention. Um, you know, hopefully we can get him moving for the winter. I'll probably give him another call this month and uh, see if I can get an update from him.
Okay. I don't view this as urgent. I, I don't think he's really trying to shine us on. He says,
No, I don't think he is.
We're gonna keep uh, keep touching bases on it. Uh, resolve it eventually. So and, and no other uh, new actions?
Uh, no, no, nothing, nothing new.
Okay, then um, moving on, uh, agenda eight, a review of the frequently asked questions, the fact section that uh, Agent Wagner prepared. I did a little editing response on that. Um, did it get circulated to the board for review at this point or uh, okay, okay? So um, Agent Wagner, just uh, bring it up and throw it against the wall, as we say, see if it sticks.
Yeah. The review? Yeah, basically I tried to um, there's a bunch of documents that, that kind of, that are on the website, that a lot of them say the same thing. They either say the same thing, or they say it in different words. Um, and it makes it a little hard if you're changing something, or if you need to update something, somebody has the wrong paper, or um, they're just looking in the wrong spot. And there's like, you know, three things on one and the fourth things on the other, you know? It's just confusing. So my thought was to put, try and put as much information on w- one page and try and put it in, you know, in plain English. Um, try and cut some of the legalese out, because there's, there's always a lot of confusion on, you know, what the wetlands actually does and when people need to apply for permits and stuff. And I've kind of been here long enough to, to geek, start getting the same questions all the time. Um, so that's why I kind of tried to write it to just kind of guide people through the process, at least give them a place to start and then um, referring them to the regulations to, you know, make sure we're we're not skipping that, because so yeah, that's basically what I have. And then, and then, so you would scroll down, this would all be on the homepage um, of the website. Like if you're applying for a permit, you'd, you'd click on the wetland section, this would show up. And then you would scroll down through it, and then you'd be able to apply for the permit at the end of it. Um, that's my thought. And I'm definitely open to suggestions. This is kind of a work in progress.
Okay. So uh, any uh, comments or questions uh, from commissioners? Mr. Monroe, you uh, indicated that you had a chance to look at them. Did you have any questions or comments regarding the?
Reading the part that I'm interested in right now, again, cut trees down. But uh, no, it doesn't really relate to what I need, because um, I'm not in a wetland.
Commissioner Larson, did you have any?
Well, I, I think it's an excellent product and uh, very helpful. Kind of like uh, I cut the trees down, where Bill was just talking about that, you know, I do think you can cut a tree down and not affect the wetlands if you leave the stump there. You're gonna do something with the stump. That might be a different issue. So a little bit of fuzziness there. But as we got called up, the, the question that I'm still wrestling with, and I'm not sure but, and I don't know the answer. How do I know if there are wetlands on my property? We go back to the town property. We know there's wetlands there, because there's a brook running through it. But what, what do we really expect to do? Now, I have, I have a little brook running through my property as well. And when I looked at the uh, you know, the G I S drawing online for the wetlands, it shows uh, you know, the wetlands is just being the brook. We say in, in this thing on the wetlands property, the town does not have an official map of the wetlands and watercourses. I think that's a requirement that we do have that. Is that true, Joe?
I don't think it's a requirement that you have it. Um, I remember, I think on in our regulations somewhere, maybe it was one of the old documents, or it was in our regulations, I'd have to check. It said that we did have an official map, and we don't.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So I think that's, maybe that's where you're getting it from. We're not required to. Um, and yeah, that, the online G I S stuff is, is um, I think there's a disclaimer on it, that it's, it's like up to ten percent bigger or something. I forget the, the exact thing, but it did, it has like a disclaimer on the paper map version that uh, kind of gets lost in the website that tells you that it's, it's not really accurate. So um, yeah, I mean, uh, really the best, you know, if you really want to know if there's wetlands on your property, you have to pay a soil scientist or be a soil scientist and delineate it or um, you know, a lot of, a lot of newer properties, you know, you can find it on a map. So this, you know, the problem is usually the older ones.
So I, I guess the, the process is that somebody who's got property, he comes and checks with you, and you would say whether or not we should get a soil scientist involved, uh, based on your review of the, the G I S document. Is that how? That should possibly be the right way to go?
That's usually what I'll start with, the, the G I S and then um, aerial maps. Um, you know, I'll take a ride by. And then, you know, dig through the, the maps here at the town hall to uh, to see if I can find it on a on a, you know, either on their property or on the neighbor's property or on a yeah, and then
Okay, I, you know, I, that's having wrestled with this, you a lot, and, and having to potentially deal with it on my own lot. You know, I'm just trying to uh, make sure that uh, that we ought to have a good standard on, on what we should expect to come in. And I don't know that that's hit it on the head quite yet. It's close. It talks about a lot of different issues, but it doesn't say this is what you have to do. Then, and maybe this is what you have to do is come talk to you. And, and that might be the right answer and
Five, it is, because it's very uh, it's very subjective. I mean, I mean, someone's, you know, they, they look for just the wetlands regulations in general, you know, is, is it a significant, significant impact? Well, that's, you know, that's really subjective, uh, depending on who we are and what your interests are.
I got you, yeah. And uh,
That's our determination.
Yeah.
Well, in the little training session that I went to, they made a big deal on uh, talking about, and you cannot tell by the plants there, contrary to popular belief, that uh, it's a wetland soil or not. It's based on the actual soil composition. And you gotta be the soil scientist to determine that.
Yeah, the soil scientists are allowed to look at the vegetation.
And they're like, yep, but they're the professionals that we
We're allowed to say, hey, that's skunk cabbage. That's marsh miragul. We know these things. Uh, but you, but you're right. It's, and, and you know, given the uh, I, I don't think it would be practical for the town to have an official map. We have to start with like the C R O G. You know, the, the, the G I S approximate mapping and uh, take it from there. If you need you know, if you, if you're really gonna try and put something in a wetland, you better concede that this is the wetlands. And the project is going to impact it, or get a soil scientist to delineate the wetland, so you can say this project will involve part of the, you know, will be partly in wetlands, and it's gonna impact X number of square feet of wetlands. But I think it is helpful that, that the fact section does include a uh, discussion of what constitute wetlands in, wetlands and watercourses in the state of Connecticut. And I think the other, you know, key piece is when in doubt, ask the agent to get you started.
So all in all, you know, I think it's an excellent initiative. I, I really like it. I think it will be helpful to you and the people of the town. And uh, it may not be perfect yet, but it's awful good.
And so this is something we can revise, you know, as, as it gets used. Uh, then, you know, you'll find out, because people will bring it to your attention, where there are ambiguities or where there's any uh, opportunity for confusion.
If we did have a town map of the wetlands, every time one of these applications come in, and somebody does have to uh, take the time to go out and get the soil scientist involved, we could kind of update our map with what we're learning from the different application process. So I just ask you to consider if we want to do that, or whatever, you're the agent.
Yeah, the maps are so highly property-specific.
Yeah, I understand.
They're, they're only good for a few acres at a time. I think it might be a long time before we had an aggregate uh, overlay. But yeah, if somebody with uh, G I S skills uh, wanted to start assembling information from our maps, um, we could give Agent Wagner a few more hours in, in the week to tackle that.
I think I need quite a few more hours for that.
I guess.
Okay, it was all my head on that.
Okay, so yeah, as far as I'm concerned, it's good to go. We could, you could certainly uh, post that uh, on, on the website and so, you know, well, see what happens.
All right.
Okay, then uh, moving on, well, we're still with the agents. So any other um, uh, items uh, to bring to our attention for the agent report?
Um, I don't think I have anything else. Um, there were no upland review permit approvals this month, so uh, I don't have anything to report there. Let's see, I did meet with uh, with Eric and the uh, town engineer and uh, Hank Bruner, and then the construction company for that uh, Andover connectivity grant on Route six and Long Hill. They're uh, starting that soon. Um, so we walked the property on uh, Thursday, last Thursday. And then just uh, I wasn't there when that was all approved before, you know, before I started. So I was kind of um, getting, almost getting a tour. Um, I know the one thing that you guys might be interested in, there was a uh, Hank Gruner had expressed concern with a drainage. I don't know if you remember, there was a drainage uh, basin at the uh, let's see, that would be the east end on the Long Hill roadside and the public works garage there. And he wanted, he wanted the sediment piles to be removed and uh, town engineer was looking at it and realized that it doesn't drain any water. Um, all the water drains the other way towards the river, which is probably something to be fixed in the future. Future issue, but um, so yeah, so they decided to um, raise that catch basin, basically get rid of it, like raise it up, put a manhole there. And then um, we wouldn't have to worry about any uh, point pollution getting into the wetland across the street, because that's where that would go. Um, so that kind of takes care of that issue with uh, potentially, you know, contaminating the wetlands on the other side of the street from anything from the public works garage. I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And then uh, moving on to item ten, elder business. Uh, we're gonna revisit uh, the uh, uh, change in the uh, culvert uh, in the previously approved uh, application, I W C twenty thirty-six. Essentially, uh, again, as you recall, it was switching from box culvert to a culvert to be constructed onsite uh, with no bottom. We have uh, Agent Wagner distributed a letter uh, from Brandon Handfield, uh, acting as uh, review uh, engineering review for the town on that. Uh, again, um, Agent Wagner, do you want to speak to that um, communication?
Yeah, I just got it this afternoon. Um, so yeah, it's uh, basically, I asked Engineer Handfield to uh, perform a review um, on behalf of the Wetlands Commission. And then the purpose was to evaluate, in particular, what, you know, wetlands impact. So would this culvert design change uh, negatively impact the wetlands? Um, so that's what he focused on when he provided the letter.
Okay. It appears that the conclusion is that there would be essentially little or no difference in terms of wetland impacts from either the construction designs, correct? And I see there are applicants uh, are on the call. I understand the motivation for this is that the um, originally proposed box culvert, uh, that the uh, um, which was in the design that we approved, that the uh, costs uh, involved in uh, install, well, yeah, basically the installation cost for a, a box culvert had gone up substantially since the time of the original uh, planned development. And the, the open bottom culvert design uh, would be less expensive to install, if not less uh, convenient. And uh, And that that was what essentially motivated your request, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Essentially, the purchase price of the four sided box culvert has gone up astronomically. And you're right, it is, it would be much easier to install the four sided culvert. But unfortunately, the cost of it has just gotten too far.
And according to Agent Wagner, your, your research showed that the three sided, the bottomless culvert is actually preferred design. So this is, this is a learning experience for us and Wetland Commission after all, you know, we're finding out things about engineering that we never knew we needed to know. So again, this seems to be a preferable design. So from that perspective, it seems to me that the, the request, the, the change that you're proposing is, is an improvement in a way over the original. Mr. Commissioner Larson, I think you, you expressed some concerns or questions about, about the modification.
I did, then, and I do have several questions and concerns. I guess the first is, should this have been one of the alternatives that we considered in the initial, the design of the project? If it's, if it's better and it ends up being cheaper, you know, why didn't we consider that when we were developing the, the proposal?
I think at the time, it wasn't really cheaper. Like, you know, I think we felt like we were coming out ahead, purchasing something that was pre-casted and setting it in place as compared to casting, you know, having an engineer design a plan and casting it in place. The math on all of the, the economics of that have just changed. And, and why I don't exactly know. But it, but it has pretty dramatically changed. And it's, I think, brought us to the, to the point where this, this just made more sense. Cost of, from a cost effectiveness perspective.
So Eric, can I get you, or if Abby could do it, to bring up the, the actual drawing that you provided us? And for, for you and the commission, George's comment about, we're finding out about the engineering. Fortunately or unfortunately, I, you had the, the opportunity to, to listen to a lot of this several weeks ago at the last planning and zoning meeting. And so it's given me some time to ponder the, the input that we got there. And I did have just a couple of questions from the engineering perspective with the effect on the wetlands that I'd like to, to go through tonight, make sure that I'm clear on.
Sure. So I don't, I'm not in front of my computer. I don't have the document, but I think it was being pulled up and I'm actually on my phone. So.
Okay.
I think that Abby could get that from the archive applications section of the website.
Yep. Get scrolled down towards the bottom, Ben. Is that Abby, you driving it?
Yeah, it's the second from the bottom.
Second from the bottom.
There you go.
Okay, can you blow that up just a little bit so we could see the picture at this point? Yeah, one or two more clicks on it there. So anyhow, if, if I look at this, and one of the things that was a surprise to me, and as I went back to look at the design we approved, it was a, it was a surprise to me there, but it shouldn't have been. But with this design, we're having to dig down at least 42 inches below the wetland surface now to pour this foundation in there. And I somehow had concluded, we talked a lot about the fill that we were going to put in the wetlands. But I guess I didn't understand that even with the box culvert, we were going to have to scrape off a foot or so to, to put this box in and maybe more than that. But, but if we dig down 42 inches for this footer, the, the notes on this, in the notes for the original one, talk about all footings shall bear on undisturbed natural material or controlled structural fill having allowable bearing value of 20 tons per square foot. And I wondered, you know, one, how do we tell that? And what, what if we dig down 42 inches? And we find out that we don't meet that requirement?
Well, we, we run into this on all of the commercial projects that I work on. It, so essentially what the engineer is asking is that we dig down to a bottom of footing of 42 inches. If the materials at that elevation are undisturbed or natural sub soils, that was, are allowed to be built on. But if you were to dig down that far and you find top soils or organic material or imported fills, then you need to go deeper until you get to natural or undisturbed soils.
So this might've actually been a bigger problem with the original design because we had the same kind of wording in there where you have to keep digging down till you get to some.
Well, before we had gone down there previously before the first design and the top soils are only about nine inches deep before you get into the sub soils. So we knew that if we excavated those top soils out, plus an additional eight inches for the thickness of the casting of the bottom of the culvert in one foot of stone, so we would have been digging down to roughly two foot eight to install this four sided culvert.
Okay, and I know on the picture from the original design, we, it, it said that we should expect two and a quarter feet of clearance from the bottom material to the top of the culvert. By the time you, you put some materials back in there.
Yes, so as of right now, my intent is to, so at the site, we have the natural flow line of the water, the, the invert. My intent is to leave that intact and not disturb it and to dig on either side of it so that we can cast a footing, cast a law.
Okay. Now, on the, the left hand side of the drawing here with the dimension going up, you know, it shows three foot maximum between the bottom material and the top of the slab. And with the slab being indicated as one foot thick, we're showing a culvert opening now of down to two feet.
I'll, I'll have to talk to engineer about that.
I would have thought that would have said three foot minimal. And, and my question to you would be, we originally started looking at a four by eight culvert, which for cost, we went down to three by eight. And, and now we're getting even smaller than all the design we did. It would be nice if we were to go back up to the original four foot so that we had a three foot opening as opposed to a two foot opening going through there.
No, I think that that's, that, that number needs to be changed. That should be three foot six.
Yeah, the, the intent here is to match the designed opening with open box culvert. Or I'm sorry, with the culvert, forgive me.
So when, when Dan had generated this structural drawing, Dan Worsley is the structural engineer that did this for us. He didn't have a copy of the approved drawings that that were that you guys had approved for, for us. So that number there, that was just a number, well, I'm not sure why he had put that number there, but it, that, it needs to be three foot six. So that we have, or actually three foot 10, so that we have a two foot 10 opening, because that's what we need.
Okay. Uh, but it shouldn't be a max, that should be a min.
Correct.
You could go up to four foot if you wanted.
Yes, I have to talk to him about changing that and then we can send a revised drawing along with the stamp, because I, that was another one of the can, that can items that Brandon had asked for.
Yeah. Now, if we, if we dig out this footing, you know, thing in the, the hole is full of water. What would we do about that?
Well, we're going to have to wait for the dry season.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which, which it said on your plan, anyhow, you weren't going to do this until summer.
Yeah, we're it seems like we missed our opportunity.
And it's got two foot of material on top of the, the slab across there. And I didn't know what that represented.
That's the driveway.
With that, I think, well, I'd have to go back and look again. It was my, my thought that from the drawing where you said the top elevation of the driveway through there, that was like four foot on top of the box culvert as opposed to two foot. But I could be wrong. I just thought it was deeper than that, and that might go to the bottom of the, the trench for the utilities or something. I don't know. I just thought there was a lot more material from the previous drawing on top to get you up to the driveway grade than, than two foot on top of that, but.
Uh, no, it was never four foot.
Okay.
It was always more to two to three feet.
Right. I don't remember the exact dimension we ended up at, but, or it's definitely higher than I, we were ever planning.
Okay. And then going back, you know, onto the general notes. And yeah. Certainly, there's a lot of these that, that I still don't understand. But under the loads, codes and standards, it would, I would think that it should say, what our regs require is it's built to support 70,000 pounds of load.
Uh, well, that's what the H20 loading is.
So that says that equals 70,000 pounds of load to an engineer, so that.
That's also a zoning requirement, not, not a wetland requirement.
But I got you.
Keep us on, keep us on.
In, in Brandon's application, or when we had there's, Brendan had responded to our application. And in his response, he requested an H20 load rating.
Yep.
And that's the standard that this structure is built to or designed to.
Okay, won't belabor it anymore, but to say that that is, you know, there are words in our zoning regs. And I'm looking at this, you're, you're going to come to this, well, it's going to come back over to zoning there. I guess I will go down to item six under foundations. And again, so it talks about the bottom line there under six to achieve XX tons per square foot bearing capacity. I would think there's probably a number that goes in there.
Uh, yeah, that's number two.
So that's the same thing?
So basically what he's saying there is that if if there's existing uncompacted fills, which I'm confident there's no uncompacted fills down there, that the uncompacted fills need to achieve XX tons per foot bearing capacity, which would, that's number two, which he would want 2.0 tons.
I would think it would be all compacted fill down there, because nothing's come through to compact it.
Yeah, I'll probably be the first human down there.
Okay, well, I guess I will defer those to the zoning engineering review of it. But I certainly there's some engineering challenges to what you're looking to do. I do agree that not having the whole slab on the bottom is probably an improvement. I just, I was surprised that we were going to be digging trenches 42 inches down, not knowing what's going to happen there with, with the water and all that, with that. That's, that was all of my comments that I had.
So essentially, this can be a slab on top of a foundation.
Well, and that, that brings into a whole new thing. How do you pour that slab on top of that to end supports? But we'll let, and I did not see that Engineer Handfield talked about any of those, those challenges. I, I think he was just looking from a wetlands perspective. So that's all I had.
Any other questions or comments regarding this? Again, I think it's been a learning experience and something that, well, we're ever faced with well, and crossings of this story again, we'll have to bear in mind. Having that, and again, I think the key question here is that unfortunately, it's been a lot less hoo-ha if we've been aware of that alternative originally, by way of comparison. So we're trying to play catch up on this thing, it becomes a challenge to, to review. But again, I think based on our attorney's written comments, communication with Agent Wagner, this is a field modification that doesn't really impact the wetlands crossing per se. We'll still have the essential water flow characteristics, unimpeded water flow and roughly equivalent disturbance of the water course wetlands during the construction. So it seems like a reasonable, and especially again, given the changes, we're all aware of energy and materials costs having risen dramatically. And, you know, precast concrete is certainly one of those. So we appreciate the opportunity and in response to our questions regarding this modification of your original plan. But again, it doesn't seem to be anything that requires a new application or modification, an app or modification, we can take it as a field engineering change. Without further ado. And when it finally does dry out, you'll be able to go ahead with the project. Of course, it may be seen after this last summer, how long that will take. Sure, the water table is pretty close to the surface at this point in that area. So, okay, any questions or comments? If not, we can then move on. Got to go, get back to the agenda here. She's now gotten buried several. Okay.
Excuse me, George, I do have one quick question. So just so that I'm clear, as far as wetlands, we're okay to?
In my opinion, I'll, again, I'll ask if there are any objections from the commissioners, but seriously, based on my understanding of the situation, this should not require further approval from wetlands. It's, you know, this, this field modification. You know, insofar as it, you know, meets the design characteristics with respect to unimpeded flow of water. And I think we've addressed that, making sure that clearances from the, you know, from the, from the water course surface to the top of the culvert are adequate in, you know, or equivalent to that, that was in the original proposal. Uh, and the dimensions and location are the same. You really haven't made substantial alteration in the wetlands crossing. So bottom line is no further, you know, you don't need to submit an application for modification here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We will get an update to the, to the design out to Agent Wagner as soon as it's available.
Okay. And we'll trust him to stay on top of it henceforth. Uh, well, then our, well, item eleven is simply to announce that our next regular meeting will be on Monday, December sixth. Same time, same virtual, well, no, we'll have a new meeting location. Uh, so a new, that is a new Zoom number for the meeting, but basically same time, same place. And we'll see you all then. With that, I can ask for consensus on the next item on the agenda, which would be adjournment. Any objection to adjournment at this point?
Nay.
We will again, adjourn by unanimous consent. Thanks all and look forward to seeing you. Well, either on December fourth for the sidewalk, if that gets pulled off. Or on the sixth for our meeting regardless. And with that, we can say goodnight and click that little red button down in the lower right-hand corner of the meeting pane. Thanks, Abby. I'll look forward to getting the meeting motions in minutes next week or later this week. Nice to go all and good night.
Hi, everybody.
Good night.